Thank you, of course.
Oh.
What's that?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to beautiful and windy downtown Grand Forks, home of the University of North Dakota. This is Grand Forks City Council's Katie to the Hall for Monday, November 9th. Under Item 1, Call to Order 1.1, Welcome and Roll Call.
Weigel.
Here.
Dackler.
Katie. Okay.
Weber.
Here.
Moss.
Here.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Here.
Great. Under Discussion Items, 2.1, COVID-19 Update. We've got a couple of things on the agenda. Funding update, COVID grant tracking and fund reimbursement, and local dashboard update. Mr. Veiling, good evening.
Hey, Council President Sandy and members of the community at the Hall. This evening, we had Megan Compton, who's the Chief Clinical Officer. She's going to provide an update on Altru. I was going to do that, but there's no better group to speak for themselves than the entity itself. I'm going to give you an update on how we're doing from a city of Grand Forks staffing perspective. Many of you were on the county commission, and there was also a governor's press conference today at four, both times. And then finally, Funding Update. Michael Dulitz is on for an update too, and I think we've attached that. So whatever updates you need in that regard. And then I have asked Abby Swanson to provide an update on the vaccine. So lots of things are moving. So with that, I'd ask Megan Compton. We've been working with Altru Health System over this last week, when I say "we," the mayor and I, working with Altru to try to make sure we meet their needs. We did have a conference call with Governor Burgum last week and asked for some needs for the city of Grand Forks and Altru. From that meeting, we had a meeting with General AlDorman, who is in charge of the logistics of all the testing. And so we had a really good meeting and follow-up, so Megan's going to talk a little bit about that. We've been working with her and her organization on the Alaris Center and some of the testing. We're doing that. So I think we've moved the needle on a few different areas, working with Altru, knowing that they're really the backbone to this whole thing. And perhaps, you know, the mayor and I should have been involved with Altru sooner, while we could help support them more so. And I just want to give them a really huge shout-out. General Dorman said that Altru Health System is the only healthcare provider throughout the state who has done what they've done. And from the curbside testing that they have done, from the call-in center that they've done, that's exclusive to Altru Health System. Those are typically done by public health departments. Altru has taken that on as our community-owned hospital, and that's allowed us to do a lot of the contact tracing and a lot of other things. So on behalf of the community, they really should have a really huge shout-out and being a really great partner, Council President Sandy. So with that, I'd ask Megan to give her briefing. I think she's going to, if you could dim the lights, Council President, and then I think she's going to share her screen. Let's hope this works, and do the PowerPoint presentation.
Mr. Veiling, I just want to confirm. Ms. Dackler, have you joined us?
Yes, I'm here.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Compton, good evening.
Good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Very good. Thanks.
Great. Well, thank you, Council President and city council members. Thanks for having me. Megan Compton, Chief Clinic Operations Officer. And I want to give you just a brief update on where we're at with COVID on the health system side. So can you all see the screen that I've shared?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we did give a brief update to the county earlier today. I've added a few things just per the conversation that Todd and I have had and some great questions that he had. I really appreciate the partnership that we've had with the city as well as the mayor and Todd. We really can't thank all of you enough for it. As we have needs and things come forward, they've been great partners. You all have been really great to work with. So I really do think that that has had a significant impact on our ability to respond. So I'm going to potentially maybe even jump to the next slide here. Hang on one second. Looks like it's not sharing on my side. Hang on. One second. All right. Can we still see it okay?
Nope.
Okay, hang on. How about now?
Yep.
All right, great. So I'm not going to put it into presentation mode because it slips away. Okay, so as of today, just giving you some updates on the numbers that we're seeing. So prior to October, we were testing probably an average of 300 to 400 patients a week. The first week in November, we tested over 2,100 patients at our curbside location. Of that, 836 of them were positive, with over 4,000 calls to our COVID hotline and 41 hospitalized inpatients. So to give you some perspective, we had been averaging on a heavier week about 1,000 calls per week to our COVID hotline. So to see that increase is pretty significant. In addition to that, we were seeing seven to 10 patients at most with COVID in our inpatient unit. And as of this first week in November, and we saw that increase in over the month of October, we're now at 41 hospitalized patients. So that's a pretty significant jump for us. I want to jump to the next slide. It gives you some indications of what that looks like on a graph. So this is a good visual to understand really what we were seeing from a curbside perspective. Can you guys see that graph?
Megan?
Yeah.
We're still seeing your very front cover.
Okay, let's try it again.
Can you hit your next arrow, Megan?
Yeah, I can see it, but you guys can't. Let's try it again.
Megan, if you can just go out of your full screen mode.
No, I'm in my little screen mode.
Okay, stop sharing and then Megan.
No, you're not going to let me stop sharing.
Oh, it's not fair sharing for you. Now, if you want to try one more time.
Infinity.
Yeah, Megan, we just have your black screen on.
Oh, she's off.
All right, we have Megan back. Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, welcome. Good evening.
Technical difficulties at its finest. Okay, what do you guys see now, anything?
We see a lot of you.
All right, that's not what I wanted. Hang on here. All right. Can you guys see it now?
Yes, very good.
That'd be great. I apologize. Okay, I am going to jump to our graph. Can you see the graph?
Yes.
We can't see it well, but it's there. So you can see on the curbside testing, we've seen a pretty dramatic increase in the last month. So prior to the last month, we were really hovering or bouncing around a bit at 1,000 work, and we've really, really come up. So a couple of things that I would say about that. With the support, and as Todd mentioned previously, with the support and the help of the mayor as well as Todd, we were able to connect with General Dorman last week on testing capabilities and what we can do. We're going to partner with the state. They have offered to provide us some different testing capabilities that I think will really help us increase what we're able to do on a daily basis for both employees and for patients. So let me jump there. So with the addition of the testing kits that have become available through the state, we're able to do a couple of different things. So as Todd mentioned, one of the things that we were running into is that our curbside testing at our family member's residency location was seeing such an increase in volume that we were running out of space to be able to test all the patients that wanted to be tested on the same day that they called, which our goal has always been that if somebody calls in meet criteria or needs to be tested, that we would be able to get them in on the same day. But because of the increase in volume, we were having to push them out or a number of them out until the second day. So that, along with winter approaching, our staff will be incredibly happy to know that we've been able to move the location to the Alaris Center. So I appreciate the mayor as well as Todd and all of your support in us being able to do that. It'll give us the opportunity to actually bring in 30 cars into the Alaris Center at one time and create two lanes so that we can really push those patients through much faster. We'll continue to use our COVID hotline. That will remain in place. That's something else that we spent time talking with General Dorman about last week, and just the value of being able to get as many questions answered as possible. And it helps really understand where we're at from the community spread perspective as well. And then we'll keep our clinic, express clinics open and continue to offer testing and treatment or care at those locations. So one of the things that we've seen within the last couple of weeks is our ER become flooded with more patients than we've been seeing in the past. And the difficulty is that there are patients that really need emergent care that should be using ER who maybe aren't, or there are patients that it's taking longer for them to get access to those providers of new emergency room because we've seen more patients come looking for testing or with symptoms that are maybe less emergent. In other words, they are urgent or non-emergent cases that could be seen at our express locations. So we're going to continue to push those services and make sure that we're communicating the availability both in Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. With the Alaris Center as an option, we're also able to expand our testing hours during the normal work week as well as add Saturday mornings to the times that people can come in to be tested. So there's some real changes and benefits to some of the testing enhancements that we've made. So I want to jump to our inpatient side because we've had a lot of really good questions about that over the last couple of weeks. And as you can see, it follows a similar trend to what we were seeing on the outpatient or that curbside testing. So we were sitting fairly low, and like I said, the most we had really been caring for up until October was 10 COVID patients on the inpatient side, but we've seen a pretty significant spike in the last couple of weeks. Right now, as of this afternoon, when I pulled the data, there were 41 COVID patients on our inpatient side. I think the max up to this point in time has been 46. So we've done a couple different things. When we started, we had about 24 COVID patient beds set aside for patients that came into the inpatient unit or qualified for an inpatient stay with COVID. We increased that to 35 about six weeks ago, and then as of last week, we've increased that to 50. So we have a total of 257 licensed beds on our main campus with an additional 40 beds on the south campus. So when you think just strictly beds, 41 COVID patients doesn't sound too bad. And we really, when you think about it from a bed perspective, we have the capability to manage that many COVID patients plus our normal volume of patients. This afternoon, when I checked, we had 136 inpatients that were non-COVID-related inpatients. So even with that, it feels like we're doing fairly well and we're able to manage that patient volume. The challenge is that we're also seeing a pretty significant impact to our staffing. So staff that are either COVID-positive themselves or have been exposed to a COVID-positive or who have family members at home with COVID that they can't isolate from. So that had a pretty significant impact on our ability to care for patients on the inpatient side. Jump to the next slide. So with the increase in outpatients, the increase in inpatients on the hospital side, and with our staff running into those same issues, we are managing today, but we certainly don't want to see the number of COVID patients increase much further than where we're at right now if we can help it. Like I said in the beginning, we were really worried about as a country, worried about the number of hospital beds as well as PPE available, medications, ventilators, testing kits and stuff. Right now, we feel really good about the number of ventilators we have available as well as medications. The PPE is pretty, we're sitting pretty good there. And hospital beds, when we think about just hospital beds. Testing kits, we've been stressed about getting additional testing kits because we know that that can make a significant difference in terms of community spreading, managing those people that are symptomatic. I think with the conversation that we had last week with Todd, the mayor, and General Dorman, we feel better and we're moving in the right direction as it relates to testing kits. Our biggest challenge today is still staffing. So we're encouraging our staff to do all the same things that everybody is encouraging the community to do, you know, to wear their masks outside of work. They're certainly doing that while they're here, but doing that outside of work as well as maintaining social distancing and really not congregating in large groups of people. So I'll stop there to take questions, but again, I just want to reiterate, the support that we've had from the community, particularly the mayor and Todd, has been incredible. I think we've made some really good strides in terms of how we can move in the right direction. I think everybody in this community is working really well together, which I do think to General Dorman's point is a bit unique. I don't know that every community is doing the same. So just want to say thank you. We really appreciate that support.
Thank you, Ms. Compton. Appreciate that update. Does anybody have any comments or questions for Ms. Compton? Will we move on? Yes, Mr. Veen?
Megan, Ken Veen here. Just a question for you on the hospital bit. For COVID patients, are they either in the ICU or in an isolation room, or do you have them outside of either one of those?
Good question, Ken. So both. So we have isolated spaces within the critical care unit. So we have seven beds available in critical care specific to COVID patients. Then outside of the critical care unit, we have a isolated space, so a floor that's dedicated to COVID patients, where those are the only patients that are being cared for on that floor.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
Yes, Ms. Compton. Very quickly, I've heard it suggested in the past that if we do start getting, you know, in trouble here, that we can reach out to uh resources around the region. What what kind of access do we have to resources either in the state or the larger region? And uh, how are we set up to take advantage of those if it's possible?
Sure. So um similar to the relationships that we have with the city and with our institutional partners, we have really good relationships with the critical access hospitals around us. Unfortunately, they too um are seeing increases in the number of patients that they're caring for, so we don't have access to those same employees that we maybe would have otherwise. The state does have a pool of nurses that they have offered, um, the bigger systems, so the PPS hospitals is what we call them, um, to pull from. Now, those nurses um may not be able to do the same, exact same things or have the same training as the nurses that we have within the health system, but we certainly can use them. So we have reached out to the state and we're are working with them on what does that for nurses look like? And could we use them maybe in a different capacity than we would a registered nurse that's within our system that's been trained and has gone through an orientation process that aligns with our Epic system and and um the way that we manage patients on a daily basis? But we have pulled, um, we have reached out to the state and they're working with us um on how we might tap into some of those resources at the state level.
Very good, thank you. And Mr. Weber, thank you, Ms. Compton, appreciate that. Mr. Phelan?
Thank you, Council President Sandy. Want to give you a heads up on, most importantly, on our city staff ourselves, we sometimes worry about the entire community, we forget about the city of Grand Forks, that well, day to day, we're responsible for. And as we know, similar to Ultra Health System, we perform some of the most critical functions to keep the city moving forward, so I want to give you an update on that. Um, on the city of Grand Forks, and thank you, we really are an employer of choice. And and remember, really on and back in March, we decided and determined through emergency order that we would um pay city employees, whether they were um here or not, we would try to have them work virtually, and as you recall, with the federal act, you'd have to pay 75% if you were gone. We've we determined at that point in time, we would pay 100%. So uh as you go around, and we keep discussing this with city employees, that we are a very good employer. And so um, number one, that's been a big deal throughout our organization. Number two, um, all of our departments, similar to the community, we're seeing um up and down, similar to Ultra regarding staffing. And so when you think of uh public safety, like um fire, police, we have similar issues with, you know, uh folks on quarantine, people in isolation, people that have tested positive, but we've been managing those. We've been managing it through um different shifts kind of work, we've been managing it through overtime and just getting the job done. On on the PSAP side, um, again, Becky Alt, our PSAP director, did a terrific job setting up the backup um PSAP down in the ELC in the basement, so we had a secondary location, and that served us quite well. Um, speaking of uh public, excuse me, public works and water works, they've had similar issues. And if you recall, the leaf collection went a little bit slower than it normally did because we had several people that were out. And again, a lot of the activities that, whether you're in water or public works, it's kind of a group activity, and that's why we were hesitant about the fall cleanup, and then we went into leaves, and then we're going, now we're going into critical storm roll. But hey, we've gotten that passed too, um, and we've been blessed by really great weather. Now we're getting ready for a snow removal on the public work site. So we continue all those basic operations with water. Water is very particular. Uh, it's it's not like you put any guy or gal into a water plant and say, just treat the water. And so um we got to make sure that we maintain really great operations. And we do have some backup with consultants that are well aware of, you know, our systems and our operations, so we do have backup plans that, uh, for example, for water plant, we had some challenges, we can bring in engineers and technicians that can help us support from those mission-critical assets. So I want to let you know we're we're still doing on, we're doing okay, it's a day-to-day battle, but um we've done quite well um since March, and it's it is more of a challenge now than it ever has been, so we we're probably representative of what's going on in the community currently. I wanted to uh discuss also, um, the mayor hosted a uh business um called Bars and Restaurants, had a had a virtual meeting last week. The mayor did reduce the bar hours again, and you should know that um those owners and managers were really um positive about what they need to do on behalf of the the community. Do they like it? No, but they do understand. So I think the message they wanted you to hear as policymakers is that um they're economically sacrificing, they get that they need to do that, they get that they probably have a disproportionate eye on them above and beyond what's going on in the community. I think a lot of the spread is just people hanging out, not in bars or restaurants, but throughout, and they feel like they're taking the brunt of that of that issue, and they just wanted you to know that, but they're willing to do what they need to do. They also want you to know, as we go through successive, hopefully CARES Act, that either start the federal government, go through the state, that they have been really significantly economically harmed, and what we can do as policymakers, we're going to talk about the legislative committee coming up here to support them, and um after this, during this pandemic and after that, is what they're asking, knowing that they're they're sacrificing more than others as we move forward. Um, also, we attach some CARES funding, and and this is a bit of a good news inside of these dark clouds, is I wanted to point to the one area that's the most critical. We've talked about public transit, public health, CARES funding and the like. The big deal is that the state of North Dakota, uh, really thanks to Governor Burgum and the Emergency Commission for what they've done. We were a little concerned, we got the first tranche of money, then the state of North Dakota ran out of money, and they had to they had to reappropriate or remove money around to provide us. They have right now, and and hopefully they don't run out of money for all, regardless, as you recall, it was related to police department payroll. And so they have extended that payroll through the end of the year, which is a big deal. When we were here last time, we we received the initial amount of dollars of about 3.6 million. We anticipated receiving another 1.7 million dollars, uh, but because of extending it to the final two months of the year, we're going to anticipate getting about 3.4 million. So um, that's a really big deal, uh, and we got to get through the payroll of November and and December, and then we'll we'll get that monies. And hopefully, they they've uh categorized the money right so that we'll get what we were anticipating. So the bottom line is we're expecting more money, but we have more expenses, and as you recall, we kind of put um our initial buckets is that we have to, if you looked at that 1.7, we were saying we have to recommit to the Grand Forks Public Schools, we had funded about half of it, and so there was another about 250,000 that we had committed that we wanted to provide them, that we weren't able to. Um, along the way, as as Megan Compton has talked about, Ultra, there's some things we we think we should support for them too, all the testing that they're doing, some of the call center stuff that they're doing, and at the Alara Center to reimburse what we're providing at the Alara Center. So that's probably a new area that we're that we're looking at um spreading. We're probably going to have to look at public health, you did allocate 407,000 out of that original CARES funding. We'll look, we may have to add some additional funds into that category, and um there's been some concerns regarding some female reimbursement, so there's probably some more additional money we need to set aside. All told, we were going to have more money, we had more needs, but I still think we're going to be in pretty good shape from a funding um perspective as as we move forward um in all those regards. Before I turn it over to Michael Doolitz and Debbie Swanson, I'd like Debbie Swanson to talk about, speak to the um the vaccines that are are moving our direction. Have Michael Doolitz, I think we attached the the dashboard, and of course, we we remain in red. Um, I think the other thing, Councilmember Doppler and I spoke today and and discussed, you know, what's different now versus um the spring. And we're getting the second wave that, you know, we were we were warned of um from our, the 1918 flu, and we are getting what we anticipated. So the things that we did differently back then is, as you recall, um, the federal government via the states shut down the economy, and uh we're challenged to do that currently. There is no funding available if we shut down the economy, so that's one of the first steps we did that's different um what we did in March versus now. Um, we, um, as part of it, we shut down City Hall, we shut down many services, we kept doing essential services, though we kept telling citizens across and other employees that we kept doing everything that we did. Uh, some of us were in City Hall, some were working virtually, that's still happening, but we all performed our essential functions from public safety to public works to water works as we move forward. I think right now what we have are better treatments, better understanding of what's what's going on currently, as as been told by Ultra Health System there, they've really managed that well and continue to do that. Um, we have greater mask usage than we ever had before too, um, during this time period. So I know they had they had a mass discussion at the county commission, and we certainly, as the mayor has said, we want to move the needle on mask usage, but we want to move the needle on all things that are really going to move move us forward, whether that's testing, whether that's strategically looking at businesses that we need to maybe alter some things to to reorientate ourselves. So we just don't want to get stuck on 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 the mask usage. We know that's going to be incredibly important to get us to the to the vaccine when it's more widely uh incorporated into our society, but we're trying to look at it an all-in kind of, and that's why we've engaged our partners like in Ultra Health System to to do that. So those are some bullets that she and I spoke of. I know there's lots of frustration, we need to do something, um, but we need to keep soldiering on, and we knew that it was going to be hard this fall. And we hope that we didn't get the second wave, and we are getting the second wave, and the second wave, as was told before us back in the late 1910s, is that it was worse than the first wave, and we're getting that right now. And we just need to stay together, not point fingers, and then find ways to strategically work together uh in this effort. That's what we're trying to do with Ultra and trying to support them because really they are the backbone um in what we're trying to to sustain ourselves. So with that, I'd um, I know Michael Doolitz is online virtually and they and Debbie Swanson, they were also part of the county commission meeting. Uh, but really, we hear if you have some feedback, some input, whatever we can do to help implement. For example, we had an institutional partners meeting last week, Ultra said, here's a couple of things we really need assistance with, we followed up, and we got some things accomplished. Um, and perhaps, as I said earlier, we should, Council President Sandy, we should have gotten some of these things handled sooner, but it is what it is, and we're trying to make up for lost time with that. So with that, I I put a period on it, and we're open to any questions, and also Debbie Swanson and Michael Doolitz are on too.
Any questions for Mr. Phelan before we bring on Mr. Doolitz? Ms. Weber?
Um, Ultra is the backbone of our health response, uh, UND, our institutional partner's incredibly important to us. They're looking to elected officials to support them. Is there an update from the the county uh commission meeting? Uh, I was there for much of it, but we left to come here.
It sounds like there, all the partners were in support of a mask mandate, you know, quote unquote, and I think the next thing, what we really have to do is what what does a mandate do? How are we going to get further enforcement? I think that's where the discussion is. They they kind of left it up to, uh, I don't think they were going to make a decision tonight. They need the health officer, I think, is similar to the mayor, is by the quickest way to get to the, get into the end zone, is the health officer on the county side. The county commission, again, it's a bureaucratic legislative body, it takes further time. So I think they're asking the health officer to make a decision, and they were looking to make a resolution just in support of an ultimate decision they would move forward with. Um, I think the other thing that came up at the county commission meeting is enforcement. So we have these guidelines, we're we're in, we'll say we're in orange, because that's what the governor now, I I think after his press conference, the whole state's in orange now. Orange means 25% of bars and restaurants. Um, it it means a variety of restricting what you should do. These are all guidelines, and so the question is, the next thing is, how should we further try to push people on these guidelines to ensure? Um, the reason why, we like the cutting of the hours, it's hard to eyeball if a business is at 25% or have complaint-based or, you know, have our police officers, you know, walking around. It's easier for us to say you have to, a curfew, uh, you have to do this, that's the easiest way for us to cut capacity. Um, and especially at high-volume hours, and I know that's really impacted bars and restaurants, but those are the two things that they was discussing, we're discussing guidelines and how do we further enforce them, following up with our police department um of how how we could best do that without having um more negative feedback than what it's worth, and and those are the nuances that we're trying to discuss.
Anything more specific from Chief Nelson on on that regard? At this time?
Not at this time. Yep, I think he's, I think he's on virtually, and so if he's asked a question, I he would certainly be willing to answer any questions, you may hit it.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Any other comments or questions from Mr. Phelan? I have a question, Mr. Phelan. I think uh from watching the county commission meeting, um, there was lots of discussion about masks, yes, but there was also, I think, a pretty resounding um sentiment from the community partners um about their wanting to support public health. Um, I think part of that uh discussion um was a little bit about Ultra and their capabilities and and their ability to continue to spool up. I think ultimately, all of us want to somehow slow the spread of the virus to try to keep um our young people in schools as well as to uh not have the big run at the hospital that that we're concerned about. Um, even if they have the best, the beds, staffing continues to be an issue for them. Knowing all of that, um, do you think it would, it would, and maybe this is a question for the mayor, um, if there are people that work in City Hall that could work from home um just simply to help um reduce the number of people that are close-quartered and to show a sign to the community that if people can work from home, perhaps they should, do you think that that would be a reasonable response for for the city of Grand Forks?
Yeah, I think definitely that's reasonable and something we can look at. I still think on our front, I think we have a duty to be here and to run effective meetings. Um, you know, in some ways administrators have a duty to make sure things are working well if they have to send out their people into the field, like, you know, police officers, I do think that, you know, your police chief or your leadership needs to be there, so it's kind of the same boat there, but certainly something to look at.
Yeah, a guy like David Cranko, I don't know if David can get to all of his files from home or if he has any in-person meetings, but for example, he might be somebody that, if he can work from home, he could, he couldn't, perhaps should work from home, just an example.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Yeah. Should we, okay, Mr. Doolitz?
Uh, good evening, uh, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. Can you uh hear and see me okay?
Yes, sir.
Uh, so um, again, I'm Michael Doolitz, I'm the opioid response project coordinator in normal times and the COVID-19 data and analytics leader in COVID times. I'm going to give a quick update on data as well as our dashboard as well. Um, as you can see from our dashboard, we're still, uh, you know, kind of firmly in the red category uh for Grand Forks County, um, with a score of 2.5, that puts us firmly in the um severe risk category. Looking and comparing to where things have gone since I was with you last week, um, our case rate has increased from 191 cases per 100,000 to 240 uh per 100,000 per day. Um, that's an um increase of about 25%. Uh, with that, we've also seen an increase in our uh testing, about a 2.3% increase. Um, and unfortunately, we've also seen 20, almost 23% increase in our percent positivity. Uh, over the past week, we have had our highest number of cases with uh over, uh, in a one week period with over 1,100 cases in Grand Forks County. Grand Forks County continues to be a leader in the state, um, you know, when we look at uh testing and testing completed per capita, uh, we're well above the, um, you know, our second place um community, which is Bismarck, and far beyond, uh, when we look at like uh the Minot area and things of that nature. Uh, looking at our case rate in comparison to our peer counties in uh in North Dakota, uh, Grand Forks County again, um, is nearing 250 cases per 100,000. Um, when we compare to our peer counties, Ward County is seeming to have the highest kind of outbreak uh that we're seeing right now, uh, within, uh, with their case rate nearing 300 cases per 100,000 per day. Uh, Cass County is the lowest with just over 120 uh cases per 100,000 per day. Uh, Grand Forks is also lower than, oh, sorry, uh, also higher than the state average uh as well, significantly higher. Looking at our percent positivity, uh, here we are doing uh much better, uh, you know, likely due to all the wonderful testing that is happening in the community, but we've had additional entrance into the uh testing kind of um realm in the community with uh private industry, additional testing partners such as my ally health, uh, Spectre Health, as well as um, you know, weekly testing events from UND, and of course, Ultra's, um, you know, great um testing availability, which again, uh, puts us way ahead of our peer communities. Uh, when we compare uh percent positivity in Grand Forks County compared to our peer counties, uh, what we are seeing in the Ward County area seems to be very much of an anomaly. Um, they are having significant challenges with um getting um enough uh testing infrastructure put together, and so they are seeing the percent positivity rates uh go up pretty significantly. And so they are seeing the percent positivity rates go up pretty significantly. They're seeing case rates similar to ours with testing, you know, a quarter to a half of what ours is on a daily basis. And so it is getting, you know, the impact to that area has been, you know, pretty heavy. Compared to Bismarck and Cass County, we are kind of following right along with them. Unfortunately, we are getting up in that 15% realm. And then finally, the state is also kind of tracking with us as well. Looking at age groups, again, we're seeing age groups kind of follow, follow a similar trend. We aren't seeing a particular age group in general. So this is kind of indicating to us that there's widespread community outbreak, or community spread versus a single outbreak in a particular group. One group of particular concern is the 60-plus age group. So the 60-plus age group, we're concerned about them because they have higher mortality rates when they do get COVID. And so, you know, there's a group of priority. Unfortunately, we have been seeing pretty significant increases in the 60-plus age group. 60, you know, the 60 to 70 age group has been kind of, you know, matching and, you know, in some spots even exceeding the rest of the community rate. The 70 to 79 age group hasn't been impacted as bad, but the 80-plus age group, previous to, you know, this recent outbreak, we've been seeing, you know, small outbreaks related to nursing homes. And what we're seeing right now is sustained community, community spread in that 80-plus age group. When we look at our hospitalizations, Grand Forks is the black line on there. We have seen an increase in hospitalizations as you've heard from Alter. We've also been working with the state to improve our hospitalization reporting as well. So as I mentioned at the last meeting I presented to you, we have been seeing, you know, we have been seeing a little bit of an anomaly with how our hospitalizations were being reported. I've been working with the state on improving that. And then I think we are getting a better understanding of where we are actually at with our hospitalization picture. So looking at our rate per 100,000, we are averaging, you know, somewhere around 15 to 20 Grand Forks County residents actively hospitalized for COVID-19. Taking a look at our cumulative incidents, so the cumulative incidents graph, you know, that, the cumulative incidence gives us an idea of where we've been at the entire pandemic. So our first case in Grand Forks County was on the 29th of March. And we're now on day 224 since we've had that first case in Grand Forks County. So we are nearing about 6,000 cases total that we've seen in Grand Forks County since the beginning of the pandemic. The big take home that I want you to take from this is twofold. First, you can see the differences in how our cases have doubled. The green dots are doubling times. And so as we've seen more cases come to the community, the doubling times have changed. And then the magnitude increases each time that we double our cases. So that does, you know, give me reason to believe it is exponential increase that we're seeing. And second, when you look at the, you know, the, the kind of the rise over the run of the slope, you know, looking at, it took 80 days for us to add 249 cases, 35 days to add 524 cases to that count, 28 days to add 1,000 cases, 39 days to add 2,000 cases, and now we've added almost 2,000 cases in 11 days. So that, you know, that does drive home that point that this is not just a linear, you know, a linear addition of cases. Each case that we, we do see does have additional impact beyond, beyond just the single person. Last week I introduced the case doubling time. So the estimated amount of time that it would take based off of the current incidence for that case count to double. Last week it was 23 days. What, based off of our data for today, it's 22 days. That said, I did want to back up a little bit and look at, you know, bring it back to our last case doubling date, which was the 28th, and give you an idea on where we're at in relation to, you know, that point in time and what the case doubling rate estimate looked like for them. So on 10/28, we doubled and we hit 4,124 cases as a community. On that day, our estimated doubling time was 26 days. And so that would give us, you know, if, if based off of that, you know, that estimation looking purely at the past, it isn't any type of specific modeling. This is looking purely at the past and trying to make an estimate of looking forward. We would expect that number to double the week of Thanksgiving. As I mentioned last week, we had also, you know, expected the same kind of doubling based off of the figure I presented last week. So somewhere between 8,000 and 9,000 cases is what we're kind of on track for, based off of our previous experience, what we're on track for before, before Thanksgiving. And that's the total incidence for Grand Forks County. So we'd be looking at adding 4,000-ish cases between the 28th of October and the 23rd of November. Again, you know, when we add cases, you, we add deaths to the community. I did adjust this down to, you know, to match the differing doubling time. But we can still expect, based off of our previous experience, we can, you know, we can expect that there'd be a potential for a significant number of additional deaths, which our mortality rate has been low for Grand Forks County because we have had good access to high quality care. We've had a younger, younger age groups that have been the primary age groups getting COVID. But if we see older individuals getting COVID, if we see impacts to the hospital system, you know, if we have any trouble with getting resources, we could end up seeing that mortality rate increase, you know, potentially closer to what the state is seeing or what we're seeing in, in journals. One thing I do want to reiterate is that as individuals get older, the chances of dying from COVID-19 do increase. So that's why seeing those increases in the 80-plus age group does give us a lot of cause for concern. So individuals over the age of 80 have about a 15% mortality rate if they are diagnosed positive with COVID. Other age groups do still have high mortality rates or significant mortality rates, but the 80-plus age group is hit particularly hard. One other thing I did want to discuss is that we did hit another of the, kind of the checkboxes on the governor's, on the governor of the North Dakota Department of Health dashboard. So today we didn't go over 15% for our 14-day average percent positivity. And that did put us into the red on that, on that graph. So that is kind of, you know, that is kind of one of the last percent positivity markers that we have looking at that. You know, they use a little bit different measurement. They use susceptible testing counters for that, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't really change much. We're still, you know, we're still at that 15% range and we still have moved into red on that category. What I don't know is how the, how the governor's office interprets when places go into, into a red. Obviously, it would be very difficult for us to move into a blue on our testing, or move out of a blue on our testing. It would take an immense testing failure to reach that. So, you know, with both being in, both of our markers being in red and one being in blue, I don't know, you know, what kind of decision calculus happens for the governor to change any type of level or anything like that. Looking at our active case rate on that 14-day governor's dashboard, we've been in red for, you know, a significant amount of time on that dashboard. And then looking at our percent positivity, I mislied at the top on there. Again, our percent positivity, we have reached that 15% positivity, which is the highest that we've seen, looking back with that same methodology. So this does give me some cause for concern because we've now maxed out looking at our two kind of dashboard options. We've maxed out for case rates, we've maxed out for percent positivity, we've maxed out for percent change. We've seen impacts on hospital risk and, you know, we're still doing good on testing. But that doesn't really give me much to provide any more warning with. So we're kind of maxed out with what these dashboards provide for information because we've reached the, you know, the kind of the cutoffs that they would have for, you know, when you should take action or, you know, things of that nature. So the hospital status right now, Alter is at tier two yellow status is what they call it, mixing, or which kind of fits within the state's tier two plan on their vulnerable population protection plan. They would go to red if they moved up into red. With testing, it would take a significant failure in testing for us to move out of, out of blue on the governor's dashboard or out of green on our dashboard. We have to get below 2,000 tests per week, which would be very difficult when we're running close to 8,000 a week. Finally, this, this slide is, you know, isn't, isn't meant to be a representation of where we're at right now. I just want it to be, you know, available to everybody to know what could happen in the future if we keep using the hospital as, or hospital capacity as our, as our cutoff for taking action. So looking at the state plan for mass patient care and the vulnerable population protection plan, if we move up into tier three, one of the components of moving into tier three is potentially waiving the standard of care. So waiving the standard of care would mean that hospitals can take whatever efforts that they need to, to meet the capacity needs that they have. Or we could see, you know, the reestablishment of like the minimum care facilities like we saw the state put up in Fargo, at the Fargo Dome as an exercise early on in the pandemic. Just so you know what, you know, what, you know, what examples of waiving the standards of care could be, you know, things like, you know, having nursing home patients stay at the nursing home when they would be better off at the hospital. That is something that is already happening in the community as part of our, you know, overall efforts. Moving patients to a lower level of care, that's something that we, we've seen in Fargo as they've moved patients from Sanford Fargo to, to nursing home in Arthur. And that, you know, patients that were of lower acuity, they moved out to that nursing home for rehabilitation services. Using non-EMS for transported transfer or using EMS personnel in the hospital setting, that is something that has been proposed and may be going on in, in Minot as well. You know, increasing shift lengths, increasing staffing ratios. Again, most, you know, both harm patient care and, you know, add, lead to an immense amount of burnout among healthcare workers and can be very difficult and very trying for mental health of healthcare workers. And then, you know, the potential of having to use other individuals to provide care outside of the healthcare system. You know, again, this is meant to be kind of a, a warning slide because that's about the only other, you know, the only other kind of tier that I have left on my dashboard, you know, is, is this level. And so I just want us to be, you know, want the understanding to be there that, you know, this is, this is kind of a last case scenario or, you know, worst case scenario for us. With that, I am open to any questions. Again, my discussion about tier three is not reflective of where Alter's at right now or anything like that. You know, they are doing a wonderful job at providing, you know, providing care given circumstances.
Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. Very good presentation. Any questions or comments for Mr. Doolitz? Ms. Weber?
Mr. Doolitz, in terms of waiving standard of care, it's my understanding while we've been sitting here, well, I guess, late afternoon, we've heard from Governor Burgum that he's now called for COVID-positive nurses to be on the job. Would that be one of the things that you are talking about, but you didn't mention specifically in that, that final slide?
So Councilmember Weber, that wouldn't be a specific, or, you know, that, that is amending an executive order. That isn't a specific, you know, movement to suspend the standard of care. You know, a person could consider that that, you know, you know, that is kind of going along that continuum towards that, but that doesn't have, or that isn't specifically, you know, in, in regard to the standard of care.
I'll also ask, I note you're the Grand Forks Health Officer Risk Scoreboard, the dashboard. Three of these indicators, three of these factors are early warning factors to help guide decision-making, policymaking decisions. The lagging factors of hospitalization and death rates, those are factors that we can anticipate generally two to three weeks after raising infection rates to see those go up. Is that, is that correct?
That would be, you know, that would, that would be relatively correct. You know, it, it all depends on hospitalizations. Hospitalizations can be a little bit fluid. But, you know, I have noticed when I've been looking and tracking deaths, you know, deaths in the community, that it can be very much of a liking indicator, you know, when you, from, when the infection happens to when they ultimately pass away to when the, you know, when the death certificate comes through to when it's reported. So I have noticed that in my work as being something of a liking indicator.
Very good. Thanks. On slide five, you talk about the, the seven-day percentage positivity rate. And also you mentioned the governor, the 14-day positivity rate. Those are both now over 15%. For the last several weeks, I've been asking about 10% as kind of a tipping point. As we see that continue to go up, I mean, does that get to a certain level? And then does it just drop? Or what, what can we expect with that, that, that tipping point? What's the significance of 10%? And what are we seeing now that we've reached that 10%?
Councilmember Weber, you know, the 10% has been widely kind of accepted as a, as a cutoff point for wide, you know, significant community spread. You know, essentially, it's a ratio of the number of cases divided by the number of tests. So, you know, we, we had an increase of almost 25% in the number of cases, but only 2% in the number of tests, which again, we are still doing a phenomenal job on testing. But, you know, we are running into kind of the limits of what testing can give us as far as helping us keep our percent positivity rate low, keeping good access and things like that. So, you know, eventually the, you know, we will run into a wall on the amount of testing that we can do, you know, even in the most ideal circumstance, you know, or there's a potential that we run into the challenge of other parts of the state I've seen where people stop testing too, which I certainly don't want to see happen.
Right. So those are early warning factors. Those were signs that we should be doing all we can. Now we're in a situation where we must be doing all we can. Otherwise, that runaway infection rate, we could anticipate that it would just continue to, to rise. Is that correct?
That is correct. So, you know, some of the, you know, big guiding documents that we've seen on COVID mitigation, suppression, things like that, where I did get some of the measures that I use in this dashboard, one of them is from the Harvard Global Health Institute. The Harvard Global Health Institute said that if your community has over 10 cases, 10 to 24 cases per 100,000, you should consider stay-at-home orders if you don't have a robust testing contact tracing system in place. And if you're over 25 cases per 100,000, you should be implementing stay-at-home orders. And, you know, we have a really good testing, and we have a really good testing and contact tracing system, but we're seeing the limits to that. And we are significantly, almost 10 times over that 25 cases per 100,000 mark that they did, you know, recommend the stay-at-home orders. I'm not recommending stay-at-home orders or anything like that. I'm just giving you that as a point of reference.
Thank you again for all your work. And Council President Sandy, thank you for letting me ask the questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Doolitz. I think we'll move on to Ms. Swanson and get an update on the potential for a vaccine after that, before we open up for additional comments from the council. We have two people, although this is not a public meeting, we do have two people that have asked to speak. So I've agreed to give each of them three minutes. So Ms. Swanson, after you.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee as a whole. I have just a real brief update on vaccination, COVID vaccination for you this evening. We don't have any PowerPoint slides, but I will promise you some in the future when we have a little bit more information. We met twice last week with our community partners in the Grand Forks area for all of Grand Forks County. And we have approximately 30 that have registered to be providers of the vaccine when it arrives. There are about 400 that are registered with the North Dakota Department of Health. So we're well represented there. I think the fact that we've had really good communication with our partners and strong relationships will really help us because we know that the delivery and the administration is going to be somewhat complex. The priority groups are in the process of being finalized and there may be some prioritization within those groups. But we know for sure that healthcare workers that are on the front lines right now will be lines right now will be among the first, and there's very good reason for doing that because it will keep them available and on the job. And then next will be long-term care workers, possibly the residents, and then moving on to other essential services. I think the big news today is probably what you've read about in the news, which is Pfizer, one of the several vaccine manufacturers in the United States, is showing some very promising results with their phase three clinical trials. They've enrolled all of the patients that they need to, or very close to that, and they have to show two months of data to be able to apply for the FDA emergency use authorization for their vaccine. And at the rate that they're going right now, they anticipate doing that at the end of November. So that's a very promising thing, I think, in terms of vaccine, and I would guess that the other companies will be not very far behind them. We've been working on a lot of logistics for even really mundane things like where we will store all the vaccine, how we will transport it, because many of them have to be in ultra cold chain environments, things like dry ice. And there's just a lot of logistics to work out, supplies and ordering supplies, and then ensuring that we have all the right vaccine in the right places. So there will be a lot of work behind the scenes. Keep in mind that we don't anticipate having large volumes of vaccine for the general public until 2021, and how that rolls out will largely depend on the clinical trials that are forthcoming. So that's the good news that I have today. We're hopeful that a vaccine will, will be here soon. Keep in mind though, we won't be able to reduce any of our mitigation efforts until we get a good supply of vaccine into the public at large. Herd immunity is expected to be around 70% in order to really suppress the coronavirus, so it will take some extraordinary effort, but I feel like we are up to the task and Grand Forks Public Health Department expects to play a very strong leadership role in that. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have. I'll continue to share our Friday updates that we get from the state health department with you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Swanson. Any questions from Ms. Swanson regarding vaccines? Seeing none, moving on. I believe we have two people that have turned in speaker cards. We have one, Mr. Waterman is downstairs in City Hall. Mr. Waterman, this is not a public hearing and we typically don't allow speakers during the committee of the whole, but as you've graciously made the effort to make it to City Hall, we're happy to provide three minutes. So when three minutes are up, we will be switching back to our next speaker. After you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Sandy, council members, Mr. Mayor. In 1867, a lot of women and children were dying in childbirth. Dr. Joseph Lister became concerned that doctors were going directly from the autopsy room into the delivery room covered with blood and delivering babies. And he was convinced that there was something going on there that was relating those two events. And so he asked the doctors at the hospital where he worked to soak their hands and their instruments in carbolic acid before delivering a baby. And the deaths went down dramatically. And that lasted for a short time and then they started going up again and couldn't understand it. And so he hid at one point in a crate with holes in it and watched, and he saw that the doctors were once again going directly from autopsying dead babies into the delivery room, delivering live babies, which then got sick and died. And he was furious, and he asked the doctors what was, why they were doing this, and they told him that the hospital administrators had said, "You don't have to do that. You don't have to listen to this Lister guy. He doesn't know what he's talking about." Some said that that drove him mad. I don't know that I believe that, but the point that I'm trying to make is that just because somebody is high up in the medical profession doesn't mean they're right. When two groups are arguing an issue, I tend to look at the group with more favor that provides scientific evidence and facts and, and information, data that actually backs up their position, as opposed to the side that attacks the individual making the statement or they're stating their case, or saying, "Well, this document doesn't have a date on it, therefore it's pseudoscience." Or these, this Great Barrington Declaration had some yahoo write in and say that they signed it under the general public category and signed their name as Mr. Farty Pants, that somehow that discredits all the work and the 30,000 plus scientists and doctors who did sign it. I think that, I think that those people carry more weight than these goofballs that are trying to get their jollies and doing this nonsense. I presented the city council with information from the CDC, World Health Organization, OSHA, who all admit that masks don't work to stop COVID-19.
30 seconds, sir.
The New England Journal of Medicine published this article, I'll read a couple of sentences from it, published by doctors, written by doctors. "We know that wearing a mask outside of healthcare facilities offers little if any protection from infection. Public health authorities define a significant exposure to COVID-19 as face-to-face contact within six feet with a patient with symptomatic COVID-19 that is sustained for at least a few minutes in some study more than 10 minutes."
Thank you, Mr. Waterman. Appreciate your input tonight. Thank you for coming. We will have another public meeting next Wednesday. Next speaker, Dr. Chalaya, are you here this evening? Please come to the podium.
Nothing like getting to exercise your freedom of speech.
Members of the council, Mr. Mayor, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, make my comments. I am Noah Chalaya. I've been a cardiologist in Grand Forks practicing for the last 37 years. This is my 38th year. In fact, I started the cardiology department for the hospital 37 years ago. I did the first cardiac angiogram. I'm both certified in internal medicine, cardiology, and international cardiology and forensic medicine. So recently I heard that Mr. Weigle had wanted to hear from a medical physician about my thoughts on the mask. By the way, I live in, I have two homes, one in Belmont Road, another one in Bindhurst Court. I live in Grand Forks. Just want to make sure that you know that. It looks like, you know, one point I want to make about the PCR testing, the PCR testing is a limited value because it doesn't really check for live viruses. It is pieces of DNA that falls off, DNA or RNA that comes of a virus, and then it's multiplied in an artificial fashion to detect. So any particulate matter from the virus will be picked up. So it's not a proof that the patient has a disease. There are lots of publications that show for everyone that tests positive for COVID-19 confirmed, there are approximately between 50 and 60 patients who are walking around with COVID-19 in the bloodstream based on antibody testing. So when you add all the numbers together, then you'll find the, the actual mortality rate is much lower than what is, you know, announced in most analysis, because they don't pick them, they're called the non, you know, another word, the non-symptomatic, asymptomatic individual walking around with the virus. So that is one thing to remember. The other thing I'm talking about is the masks. First of all, the surgical mask and the cloth mask are different. The cloth masks are completely almost useless. The surgical mask and the N95 mask may have some benefit, but the, the virus particles are so small and it is not-
30 seconds, sir.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Yes. So they are not all that effective in trying to prevent the viral infection. I'm sorry about that. They just turn it off. And so my concern is that, you know, I have no data that shows that masks definitely work. It seems to be logical to, you know, mandate this. It seems like it was reasonable, but many times, very often when we do medical decisions, we say it's reasonable to do this, but then we do a double-blind trial and we find that it doesn't work out that way.
Thank you, Dr. Chalaya.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate your input tonight.
So that was a whole lot of information. Thank you to all the speakers and for the two people that came to provide their opinion. Any other comments related to COVID from council that, for discussion? Ms. Mock?
So last week we saw the early closures for bars and restaurants come back, and I think that that was a step that could be taken. I guess my concern would be that when that happened, I asked some questions on compliance issues, and it seems like we're having a hard time getting compliance with the governor's recommendations. And I guess I'm concerned by that because if we continue on this trend, it's logical to think that the governor would put us into the red category, which then, my understanding is comes with closures of some of these bars and restaurants. That's what that plan calls for. So I would like to see us make a concerted effort to keep these businesses open and to make sure that everyone is doing their part to comply. I know that that certainly isn't easy and we certainly have some businesses that are taking a hit, but we also have to get our consumer confidence back up. We have to think about the large scale of our economics. We've still got the Canadian border that is closed. And quite frankly, if the numbers continue on this trend, I would think that the governor will move us into red. And I would like to make an effort to stop that before we get there. One idea that I had was that we could explore tying alcohol licenses to compliance with the governor's recommendations. We see that with underage drinking, so I would think that it could be a similar system so that we're not asking any undue burden of any staff. And I think that that's something that we have control over. So I'd like to at least have a conversation about that. I think we could also, I saw that the governor did issue with part of his hospital, I guess, conference today, he announced that he would like to see businesses and event gatherings be reduced to occupancy of 25% with a cap of 50 people. I don't know if that is enough or if we have to do more to support something like that coming from the governor. That seems to be a place where spread is occurring, so I would think that that is something that we could take a step at. I also think that we could potentially look to create a committee of council members to help work directly with our public health staff or with our public health officer to come up with different policy recommendations to this body to consider so that it's not haphazard perhaps, and they can be worked out before these meetings. But I am feeling that we need to be a little bit more aggressive in our approach, particularly given the state that Altrue is in and prior to any schools shutting down or UND making decisions after Thanksgiving.
Good ideas. Any comments or thoughts related to, to Ms. Mock's comments?
President Sandy?
Oh, yeah, Ms. Dockler?
Oh, that's okay. Mr. Veen, please go ahead and then I'll follow up.
Okay, Ms. Veen.
Okay, I was just going to support. I think the ideas or thoughts that Ms. Mock brought forward, I think they all make good sense. I think, you know, we have a strong desire to keep businesses open, to keep schools open, to keep the economy running, and we have to put certain rules, regulations or whatever in effect to make sure that that happens because the downside is, is that we have to all get locked down and closed again. None of us want to do that. We did a great first step when we required masks. The ideas that Ms. Mock and others have brought forward and probably are, I think are probably discussing or wanting to bring forward, I think are really, really important. I like the idea she said about tying the liquor license to compliance, like we do with, that, that to me would make real good sense. And I also think that we have to understand, and we as city council people need to, to be aware of our responsibility in this. We are the policymaking board of the city and that we should be looking at what the policies are that are going to be necessary to have public safety. An example that I like to use, I don't use it very often, but I do know in the post-flood era, we created a city council committee that was going to be specific to policymaking for recovery. And Ms. Mock talked about a city council committee to do such. I think that should be something we would also consider so that we could meet regularly, ask questions. This is, this has evolved just as it was expected to evolve, and I think we have our backs against the wall. We've got to do something more. We can't continue to do the same and expect that it's going to go away. There's a lot of different things, I think, ideas that we have, maybe the public has that would allow some type of feedback or input into this that we could use to, to make change for the future. So as, as good as the ideas I think that have been presented so far, I think the idea of creating structure is probably the most critical thing we could do to address all the different questions or issues that may come forward. So I just want to throw those comments out to begin with.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Ms. Dockler?
I'm supportive of what Mr. Veen has also said. I think that a subcommittee that we could possibly consider or just simply add them to that committee are business owners in town because I think that they need to have a voice at the table. Mr. Phelan had mentioned earlier in our meeting that they were feeling the weight of, of responsibility for protecting our community against COVID. And certainly they do have the ability to help protect people by making sure that they are enforcing mask wearing inside the building while people are not eating, drinking, and then also adhering to percentage of guidelines of how many people are in their building at a time. However, I don't want to make them feel like they're out on an island and taking care of all of our COVID measures by themselves. Certainly, I think that our council also needs to take on that responsibility. And unfortunately, I, I believe that we are a little bit behind in the curve and we too need to take responsibility for that and take some action like we have been talking about tonight in order to keep our businesses open. 25% operation is not a viable business model for most businesses. It probably is better for them to actually shut their doors and just focus on delivery options or something else at that point. Looking at our staff as a city and using overtime to fill the hours because we have so many employees that are sick or positive COVID contacts is not a sustainable system either. We will burn out our staff. We need to actually look forward and take some measures and steps to mitigate as much as possible. Unfortunately, we passed the point of large prevention, but I don't, I don't think that that means we can't make steps forward. And so I would also be supportive of taking on any kind of enforcement measure like Vice President Mock has mentioned with tying those liquor licenses to enforcing mask mandate within businesses and then also making sure that they're maintaining certain amounts of people or capacity amounts. I also think that we need to look at some of these larger events that are happening in our community still, like at the Alaris Center. And I know that they're doing that because we want to create a new sense of normal for folks, and they also are looking at their bottom line. But I think that maybe we need to start looking at our CARES Act dollars too so that we're minimizing some of the really large potential super-spreader events that could be happening out there. And it's not to say that they're not doing a great job out there with their COVID prevention plans and action plans to try and keep people safe, but the fact of the matter is, we're not trying to keep anyone from ever getting it. I don't think that that's possible nor viable, but we are trying to mitigate the amount of positives that are happening within our community and keeping the amount of folks out of the hospital as much as possible. And by taking steps to do that is going to be a stretch. It's not going to be easy. It's not always going to be fun, but in the end, it's going to allow us to create new habits and new norms within our community to keep folks safe and keep businesses open and running, and hopefully create a new sense of safety for patients and customers so that they feel like they can go out- they feel like they can go out and eat with their families and patronize those places and send their kids to school. I think it's in the city's best interest to come out strong in our support of Dr. Walz's actions to mitigate COVID-19 within our community at the city level for sure, but then also support him in his countywide measures. Some of us were able to attend the county meeting today, and I know that there's a Grand Forks Public Schools meeting that's going on tonight right now. I think it's going to be imperative that we move together as we move forward to keep these things open and keep those lines of communication open. I don't have all the answers by any means and I'm just as valuable as the next person and I'm absolutely willing to admit that, but I do think that we have to stop and waiting for the perfect answer. There is not going to be a perfect answer and no one is coming to save us. If the governor is saying that it's okay for asymptomatic positive COVID patient or COVID nurses and doctors, medical staff to go back into the hospitals and work, we've reached a level that we should all be worried and we should all be kind of digging in and figuring out solutions to move forward. And I think that Grand Forks, we have the opportunity, if we're not afraid, to lead. We were leading in our response at the beginning of this pandemic and perhaps we were lulled into a false sense of security by the success of the preventative measures that were taken. Now we need to recognize it, acknowledge it, and right the boat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dockler. Any follow-up comments? Mr. Gavami?
So I just want to reflect for just a moment on the county commission's meeting. It was quite informational. We had Dr. Brenner elaborate on their struggle to find staff as people are exposed and unable to come into work. We had President Omakost express his concern that the rest of the city wasn't maybe standing up to the same policies and rules that they are on campus, so there's no recourse or action for students or staff outside of campus to act differently. And then there was a fact that was stated where I believe it was if you were 80 or above, it was about a 15% mortality rate in Grand Forks County. All things that made me stop and think that maybe, you know, I think we could all agree that maybe the commission or the council, just as much as personal responsibility, is maybe all failed. So I think that we as a council haven't done enough, just as I think that maybe our thoughts that everyone should just be responsible for their own actions seems to be that the spread has continued. And so just as much as everybody else is to blame, so are we. So I'm really supportive of, I think that having a conversation while we have another meeting with many other things on the agenda is not going to cut it. So if we have a task force or a committee or whatever it is, there needs to be something where we can just meet and discuss this and not have to have the whole staff sitting here, you know, debating on when we're going to move on to the next topic. I think we need to sit around, the answers aren't obviously apparent to anybody, right? So we need to sit and discuss and if it's our responsibility, then let's, we should be doing it, we should be moving forward. Let's.
Thank you, Mr. Gavami. Yeah, Mr. Weigle, welcome.
I'll just, I'll keep it quick and, quick and easy. I think Mr. Phelan and maybe even DC Ferguson back there would agree that many of our positives within City Hall may be related to law enforcement or fire, which have a unique job and unique responsibility to the community. They're going to the medical calls where people may have a positive COVID diagnosis. They're interacting with people on a daily basis. And so I think naturally your law enforcement and firefighters are going to, are going to contract the virus even with wearing a mask. I also think that if we close businesses down and we say, you know, takeout only, people are going to become unemployed. Six months ago or five months ago, we had the backing of the federal government where people were getting extra money through unemployment. We don't have that now, so I think that is a consideration that we need to look at. We haven't talked about mental health at all. That's something we really need to look at. While we can say we can close down every single event and nobody can go outside and that if you go outside without a mask, that you are now, you could be cited with a Class B misdemeanor, which is equal to driving under the influence of alcohol or prostitution, that's what that order will say. Is that the road we want to go down? That can be debated, but I also think we need to look at the mental health of people. People need to be able to get outdoors, they need to be able to do things, and that's something that nobody has talked about. We're only talking about the cases that we're dealing with, we're talking about COVID, but nobody has brought up mental health. So I really think we need to take a look at that and people need to understand that it is a big thing and it is affecting people within our community.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle. Mr. Weber?
Thank you.
As long as you keep it short.
I'll try to keep it short. Very good. Two minutes, here we go. County Commission meeting tonight, there's a clear indication from all major institutional partners, do something. They were all in support of something being done. We can't wait for perfect, we need to move forward with all possible haste. County noted that they're not a home rule county, so they can't move forward in the same way that the city possibly could. Public health officials are not elected officials and they're hesitant to be setting policy. And we can't look to business people to address our public health needs here. So the city is home rule, we need to move ahead with all possible haste. What I was hearing consensus on, general consensus, mostly consensus, was that there should be some sort of entity, a committee created as fast as possible. I think that committee could be all council members who are available. It should start meeting, not next week, not in two weeks from now, it should meet as soon as possible, whether it's 6:00 AM Wednesday morning or 6:00 PM Wednesday evening. We need to get together and we should sit down. We don't need to bring in all the institutional partners. We've heard from them. They're wanting us to do something. We need to sit down with Debbie Swanson, Michael Dewitt, Sean McBride, and especially Dr. Walz, get their recommendations. The committee, the council, this council committee, this council COVID committee then needs to look at those recommendations and bring them forward with some specific motions. I would like to move that we, with city staff, create such a council, a committee, a council COVID committee with all possible haste to meet with our public health officials and to gather their recommendations and articulate those in motions. That's a motion.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Gavami for discussion. At that, assuming we have a meeting of this group, will that group discuss, for example, liquor licenses and enforcement in bars and restaurants, group size gatherings?
We should be asking our public health officials all of those questions and asking for recommendations on all of that.
A resolution related to or discussion related to nonessential workers who can work from home, all around town, working from home. Not necessarily a requirement, but a very friendly ask of major businesses in our community. I think that would go a long way.
And we're not a rubber stamp for public health officials? We have an obligation to weigh those, consider those for the good of the community, but we've been waiting for months to do this. They've been hesitant to offer those recommendations. We have questions. We need to sit down with them, take their recommendations, and move that into actionable items with all possible haste.
I think just for point of discussion, if we're going to make, just out of curiosity, do you believe in, if we have a meeting this week, we would be able to come up with recommendations to refer to the city council on Monday night next week? Or will it take more time than that?
We're in an emergency situation. The flood has happened. It's a different kind of emergency than the flood. The flood was happened, you could measure that in feet per water, feet of water. Now we have a clear indication, we have people dying. You don't get much more of an, I mean, this is an emergency, we need to make use of all possible emergency powers to move forward with all possible haste.
I believe in which case, which is why I would assume Mr. Gosdard appeared on my screen, I would guess we have issues related to noticing of said committee, but Mr. Gosdard, would you like to add to the good of the order?
Just a point of information is that under the ordinance, a special committee can be appointed by the presiding officer, which is, I understand, is the mayor, unless otherwise specially directed by the council. So there is the, you can create these special committees, but be mindful that you're going to have, whatever meeting you're going to have, that you're going to have is a special meeting and you would have to provide appropriate notice to the Grand Forks channel before you'd conduct them because it would be an open meeting in that regard, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gosdard, appreciate that insight.
So that means Wednesday would be the earliest that we could have such a meeting?
I don't know if we could notice, how much notice do we need?
Can't we tell the Herald right now? I thought it was, isn't it their responsibility to be watching this?
Three days' notice, I believe, right? Isn't that three days, Mr. Phelan? Mr. Gosdard?
If there is a time period as to when, you need to provide notice of a special meeting. If everything is relative as to, you know, if there is a quote dire straits and if we don't get together within a short period of time, life and property will be damaged, certainly, then we'd notice it up as quickly as we can. So if you're going to meet Wednesday, I think if you got the notice out to them first thing tomorrow morning, that would probably be sufficient, but then be mindful of that we're going to have this, you're going to have to put your agenda together correctly because anything that would not be on the agenda could not be discussed. I think it would be treated as a special meeting. Each one of these would be a special meeting, so you've got to be mindful of making sure the agenda is appropriate and you've got all the agenda items you want to discuss and action items that you may want to bring forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gosdard. Mr. Weber?
Sure. Mr. Gosdard, thank you for protecting our legal vulnerabilities. We need advice from you now on how to do this, not what we can't do.
I just told you, Councilmember Weber, it's, all you have to do is provide that notice, there isn't a publication requirement. You just have to tell them this is what's the meeting, this is the date and the time, these are the agenda items.
And the agenda item, can that be all matters related to COVID necessary for rapid response? Is that, is that an agenda item that is specific enough but open enough to allow us to do the kind of work that I just described?
It's, in fact, I just read the legislature generals coming on that the topic today that you can't necessarily have a catch-all if you're going to take some action on the matter. Again, you could meet Wednesday, have that kind of general working session discussion, and then schedule another meeting for Thursday or Friday that you delineated some action items that you'd like to take. So I'm not saying that you can't have multiple meetings, you can.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel. Mr. Weigle?
Mr. Gosdard, if there's no quorum and it's a three-person committee, are we still under those same obligations?
Is that Councilmember Weigle?
Yep.
Yes, a community is subject to the same rules.
Sounds good, thank you.
Counsel President Sandy, if I could help, maybe just so that we can get moving here, I'm supposed to serve both the legislative and executive branch. I think what, if I could summarize what I think what you're trying to say here, you want to make sure the guidelines that are related to the governors are not just guidelines, but they're enforceable rules. And so I think number one, we have to, we can come up with some strategies in these high-impact areas to move the guidelines to orders and then importantly, how are we going to enforce them? And I'm all about public health, but some, public health is not going to enforce some of these things, so we got to have, it's got to be the whole team of City of Grand Forks. It's one thing making the rules, it's the other thing to enforce it. And enforcement's usually not a lot of fun on some of these things. So I think that's number one, we can come up with some strategies on that. Voice of business owners, that's what Councilmember Dockler, I think we need to give them time so that they can be here too, to discuss some of their concerns so that it, we're not arguing needlessly with one another, they feel like they're engaged as part of this discussion, which I think then leads to CARES funding. CARES fund, they're going to say, hey, you're unduly harming my business and you're shutting me down, we should buy, look at programs similar to what we did with the flood. We took some of our federal money and we spread it all around the community. I think that should be part of the discussion finally. And then supporting Dr. Walz, and we've always supported Dr. Walz, okay? And we said that, Mayor and I said that to him this morning, hey, we support you 100%. We're behind you on whatever you think is appropriate and we'll help support that. So we have said that to him. Integrating our partners, some partners would probably want a shutdown order. We haven't, we haven't been ready to do that at this point in time, just so you know, I'll know that. And we need to lead, I, we all agree we need to lead, but we all need to work together. So I can set up an agenda, I think those are the points I heard, and in the meantime, we'll work on some strategies so that when you do meet on Wednesday or whatever it is, there's some, there's some meat behind those. But then also I think that'll give business owners some time because not everybody's going to be for this, gives them some time and I feel like when, that the county commission people don't feel like they're being heard, and I think it's really important to talk about flood and post-flood. Post-flood wasn't very beautiful all the time and we need to make sure the citizens are heard as part of this too. So I can create an agenda, maybe with a series of, so people know, hey, they're going to be talking business restrictions of these kinds, so nobody can say, hey, I didn't know the city council was going to discuss that. I thought all they were talking about were masks. And so they understand what kind of consequences we're talking about and we'll meet tomorrow morning on this as city staff and get something from you as a legislative body.
For clarity, Mr. Phelan, I was primarily looking for recommendations from our public health officials, Dr. Walz, Ms. Swanson, et cetera. And when you say we've always supported Dr. Walz, that's the agenda item you're talking about is to take recommendations from our public health officials and consider them?
Absolutely, we always take, and at the end of the day, we take recommendations. There's differences of opinion across the city in different city departments too, so again, I would just, I think we need to be a little more comprehensive, a little nuanced because one action will have a negative reaction. I think we need to be thoughtful and thorough and comprehensive on things. And that's why some have not recommended direct thoughts that maybe they thought we should do because they know there's negative consequences and they haven't wanted to make those recommendations. There have been no recommendations to us regarding shutting things down. There's been some concerns, some, with Alara Center, there's an event, can we do this in a safe and secure way? I'll talk about the Pride of Dakota, we had lots of engagement with our public health department, with the Alara Center, with the Department of Ag, and we decided we could move forward with that event in a safe and secure way and then move forward. We all worked together on that, just so everyone knows that. That's just one example I'm sure people are pointed to as a large event.
I said two things in relation to this. We can't let perfect be the enemy of good here, we need to do something. So if we wait until we've got everything set up, then we're going to keep waiting for months. We don't have time to do that.
Yeah.
In the meantime, I also said, we're not just a rubber stamp for the recommendations of the public health officials, we have an obligation to listen to them, to weigh them, and to make recommendations.
And that's why, Council President Sandy, I have recommended using the governor's restart guidelines in all the various industries. They've had, private sector industry has had input on those, they've been, there's general, they're guidelines. And I think the easiest and simplest way to move forward is take those guidelines and put them into a certain order. We want to take this guideline that's embedded with industry spokespeople in there, let's move that to more, beyond a guideline and try to make something in order. That would be the quickest way and I think would cause a lot less frustration across all the different interests.
Very good, Mr. Phelan, I think we have a solid understanding of what we were looking for. There is a motion and second on the floor, I'd like to move it first and then we can continue the discussion, unless you want to make an amendment.
No, I do want to talk about the motion though.
Okay, Ms. Veen, very good.
Here's the question I have. Could we act, could we actually have a committee of the hall meeting that is set up as a work session? And that we would have all seven of us there, not a group of three or four at this time unless that becomes a recommendation out of that specific work session, that we want to create a smaller one, like I said. But at least that we could have a work session where we could all sit around and get into the details. I'd also like to make sure that we have an idea to look at the agenda and if we have items that we think are specific that should be on that agenda, that we as policymakers have the ability to put that item on the agenda and have it up for discussion. I think we have to be in a position to be able to plan and implement at the same time because I don't know if it's going to be perfect, but I think it's urgent. that we get to be able to do those things. And so I hate to see the agenda limit us from what we can come up with for solutions. So somehow we've got to figure out how we can have an appropriate agenda that doesn't tie our hands, and that we figure out a way to write that and to include the items that we have. So what I, why I wanted to speak in part was because when you said a committee, I think we need to define what that committee is, and this might be at least a first step of what that committee should look like.
Council President Sandy, I would recommend you meet as the committee of the whole. It's, we can do things virtually, or I think it would be the best way to demonstrate that the whole, the entire city council is engaged on this matter, and it's not a subcommittee of a committee.
Very good. Just for the record, I am traveling the rest of the week and am not available under any circumstances for an evening meeting. I could go at 6:00 in the morning, no problem via Zoom. There's, so there's a motion in the second. Mr. Phelan, you will run the agenda, the proposed agenda, by the committee prior to publishing the agenda?
I will. Council President Sandy, I will run it, pass both you and Council Vice President Mock and also Mayor Potchinsky.
Great. One additional thought for the agenda. I believe we need to do widespread antibody testing for the school system. If I had my way, we would test every single student and faculty and staff for antibodies. I know legally we can't make them, and I know there are lots of parents that won't want their kids pricked with a needle. But I, for one, would be someone that would make funding, some of our CARES Act funding available to purchase tests and do as much testing for the faculty and staff as possible because anytime we can identify somebody with antibodies and give them three months where they can stay in work rather than having to quarantine every time they're in close contact, that'll help keep employees in the school system, so. Madam, Ms. Mock?
I just would like to reiterate that these are efforts to keep our businesses open before we get worse with this issue. I would also like to request that Mental Health Matters, which I believe was initially a city initiative that now the school board is leading, but I would like to see that expanded to specifically focus on COVID mental health because I think that will be an ongoing issue in, into the next year, for sure.
Mr. Phelan?
If I could respond to that, Council President Sandy. Council Vice President Mock, I would say, this is what I've learned, and I wasn't sure what helped Mental Health Matters, but I think it's, I think how they want me to message is that certainly the Grand Forks Public Schools took on Mental Health Matters for K through 12 schools. And if it was communicated previous by the previous mayor or his assistant, they do not feel like they're the leaders of Mental Health Matters, so they want to say that for the record. They think it's a community-wide thing, and that's why we brought it up as a kind of a community-wide initiative. So I think it's very important. They just want to make sure everyone realizes they didn't agree to take on the whole, the whole enchilada on that thing. But we will incorporate that as part of our needs, as part of CARES funding.
Very good. Thank you very much. There's a motion in the second on the floor. Anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 2.2, Growth Fund Ordinance Proposed Changes. We were provided a draft ordinance. I trust everyone on the council has had the opportunity to review the ordinance. Are there any comments and thoughts related specifically to the draft ordinance as provided by Mr. Gaustad?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you, sir. I would propose, I'd like to move approval of the ordinance with the elimination in Section 3A. The words "shall be conducted annually" and to change Section C to, "The chairperson of the Growth Fund Committee must be one of three members from the city council." And with that, that's my motion.
Sorry, so, so item C, you're indicating, did you say C?
Item A, 3A, I'm asking that we eliminate the words "shall be conducted annually," and I can explain this now or later.
Why don't you explain that now?
Very good. The ordinance is that JDA apparently hold elections every year. As a matter of practice, if memory serves, we've only been holding those elections every election cycle. So I think we need to go clean up our JDA ordinance, whatever that number is, it's a number, well, we know the number. So we need to go clean that up. And eliminating those words isn't a problem because it's still connected to the JDA elections. So I think that A is pretty innocuous. We need to go clean up the JDA ordinance. When we do that, it'll be tied to the JDA ordinance and take care of itself that way. C, I'm asking to change all of C to simply read, "The chairperson of the Growth Fund Committee must be one of three members from the city council." And I can explain that as well, or I'll just hold that motion now and we can discuss it if there is a second.
There's a second. Mr. Veen? Any discussion, Mr. Veen?
Yeah, what's your, what's your take on item C, Mr. Weber?
Well, item C is a solution searching for a problem. There has not been a problem when it was first brought up in June. Mr. Gaustad indicated that there was no conflict with that person, the same person being chair of both. And we shouldn't be tying the hands of either organization on terms of who they want to elect to, for their, to chair those committees. And the, this is, like I say, a solution looking for a problem. Each committee should be allowed to choose its own lead. With that, I believe, Mr. Sandy, Council President Sandy, you want there to be language that the mayor cannot be chair of the JDA. I think that's smart. The mayor through staff already controls the agenda for both committees, and we need to have balance for that power. But that isn't part of this ordinance. That would need to be part of 24-0106, the JDA part of the code.
So I think, I think that Mr. Gaustad has additional work to be done on the draft ordinance. He did not incorporate the request to identify that the mayor cannot be the chair of the Growth Fund Board.
Yeah, that's because the mayor can't, this is just about the Growth Fund Committee.
Correct.
So we only asked him to change the ordinance for the Growth Fund Committee. That aspect would be part of the ordinance for the-
For the Growth Fund Board.
For the JDA.
For the JDA, right, 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 right. Very good. So any other comments related to those amendments, Mr. Veen?
Yeah, I would say, especially item C, I've been back and forth on that. Does it make sense to have it restricted or not? I really like the idea of keeping it with the city council members. That, to me, makes absolute sense. And, you know, if, the thing about it is, I think we've got to look at it as not the person, but what's the right policy for the city? Because various people could be in that position. Some may be perceived good, some may be not so good. I mean, that's always going to be a perception and an individual item to know what to do. But I also think it's, it's nice to let each of the committees, including this one here, make the decision amongst the members themselves and not have their hands tied. So it was a little bit of a six of one, a little bit of half dozen of the other, but I still think why I seconded, first of all, I want to understand it better, but the other part was, I do think it doesn't hold up what the, what the committee would want to see as their best leader, not as dictating who that should be. With, you know, I did say, obviously, it should be council. I would probably maybe, yeah, I just think it should be left up to the committee. We're going to add additional, additional members to that committee now and let them make that decision without tying their hands. That's, that's how I ended up, although I've got to admit, I really went back and forth on this one. It was, but that's the end where I was at.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Kavami?
So I think this originally came forward in the last Growth Fund Committee meeting. You know, I'm of the opinion that the two committees should not be headed by the same person regardless of the person. If we are expanding our Growth Fund Committee to four citizens, they are being asked to represent the best interest for the Growth Fund, and then we are limiting them to pick someone that's on the city council, which is inherently going to make it a political decision. If it was open to anybody, then that'd be a different story. But if we're asking our citizens to do their public service and help grow Grand Forks for the Growth Fund, I don't think we need to ask them to make a political decision as well and have them be in a position where there's no opportunity to just make business decisions, not have to make a decision for the leadership. So I'm just going to echo what I said at the last Growth Fund Committee meeting where I just think they should be separate people, and that was the intent of the motion last time.
Mr. Kavami, let me ask Ms. Mock?
I guess I was a little surprised to see that we were just going to limit that chair position to a city council person. I guess I would potentially be open to committee members chairing. I mean, somebody chairs planning and zoning, somebody chairs several meetings where they don't necessarily hold a title. So I guess, I don't know, I, I was a little surprised to see that we would restrict it to just city council members as potential chairs.
I think that's the way we've always done it. I, for one, have been going back and forth on the differentiation between the chairperson of the Growth Fund and the JDA, the Growth Fund Committee versus the Growth Fund Board. I personally like having them separated. However, I don't really think that, I'm not sure I want to tie our hands because there may be at some point in the future where we believe we want the same person. I would vote, Mr. Weber, to have someone else be one or the other. I think you do an outstanding job. As someone that was the chair of the JDA for six years while you were the chair of the Growth Fund Committee, I believe it gave us better balance and an extra set of eyes on every single topic. And provide, I believe it provided better understanding for the JDA and the city council to have two people that were quite well familiar with all of the topics. That being said, I think you do an outstanding job. You do a better job as chair of JDA than I, than I did in my entire time. So this is, it's not a personal thing. I just believe personally that we should have two separate people do those jobs. That being said, I will go along with your motion because we don't, I don't know what tomorrow brings, and we may want to have the same person. I may change my mind and want to have the same person in that position in future, for future years. But as of today, I respectfully go along with your request to eliminate that from, from the subject ordinance.
Mr. Weber?
I guess my question would be, like I said last, then what is the point of the Growth Fund? If we have, if we have the same chair for the Growth Fund and we have the same chair for the JDA, then we might as well just add four people from the community to the JDA board.
Let me, let me put it this way. The, Mr. Weber, the, and this is perhaps that we have things out of order related to who is elected first. Perhaps the Growth Fund Committee should be choosing their chairperson first, and then the JDA choose their chairperson. And if the council doesn't like having the same person in that position, the JDA can choose someone else.
I don't disagree, but we continue to go down the path where we have one person chairing a committee that answers to another committee with that same person chairing.
I understand what you're saying.
That shouldn't be like that, but we continue to do it.
Again, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Then why will, why will we not make the ordinance change?
Because, again, I don't know what the future brings.
None of us do.
But we will all have the opportunity. If we change the order of who is elected first, we would give the JDA the opportunity to deliberate and make that decision. Mr. Gaustad, did you have something to add?
I do. Just a couple of points with respect to Councilmember Weber's removal of the "conducted annually" in Subpart A. I just wanted to, and I think he was talking about that we may need some cleanup of another ordinance with respect to the JDA, and he is correct because the ordinance does call for the officers of the JDA to be elected annually. So if you're going to do something, if you have them or doing something different than annually, then that particular ordinance would have to be modified. As far as Subpart C, it seemed to me that it would, under the motion, as I'm understanding it, that would simply be removed from the proposed ordinance. That wouldn't have a first reading at the next city council meeting. And as far as whether you wanted a city council member or all of the members of this, this committee to be eligible as a, as the chairperson, that's fine. You know, I just need some, a little bit of direction on that. And finally, if we were thinking about having the vote of this, the chairperson and vice-chairperson of this committee first, followed by the JDA, that's an easy fix as well. This was, this was presented for the purpose of doing this very thing, is having these discussions to further this stuff out, drill it down a little bit. A couple of things I just wanted to point out. We just did a little bit of cleanup with respect to the publication. And then there was a matter that was brought to my attention after I sent this out. Staff was thinking, here, got an email from Meredith Richards who wanted to change the reporting requirement under the ordinance, they're supposed to give an annual report by June 1st of each year. And I think there was some discussion, change that to August. So that would be part of the first reading, that kind of cleanup modification as well.
Mr. Sandy? Yeah, Mr. Veen, Fred Funstone, go ahead.
President Sandy, a problem with electing the JDA chair after the Growth Fund Committee has elected their chair is that those three members might change. They're, they're being appointed at that, with each election, as we've been doing it, there is a decision by the council president who to recommend for those positions. So that, that takes some time. Normally, we have that JDA election at that same meeting when those people are, are chosen. So in the meantime, we have a motion.
In the meantime, there is a motion in the second on the floor. I think I will probably vote no, just for all of your edification because I, I didn't recognize that the JDA, we are supposed to be electing the JDA annually, the JDA chair. And so I would, I would not vote to support your motion unless we go back to electing the chair of the Growth Fund annually. But if you want to make it, if you want to remove that part, then, then I'm, I will not vote to support it.
So what you're asking is that I simply change my motion to remove the language "shall be conducted annually"?
Yeah. If you move A back to the way it was and leaves, remove C as you suggested, I'll support you. Mr. Weber?
I'll, I'll, I'll change to my motion. Eliminate change to the deletion from Section A.
Mr. Veen, will you?
Sure.
Any other comments?
No, I guess we're not, I don't think we're necessarily closed to that. If you want to make that motion, you're welcome to do so.
I would make a motion to amend that we allow any member of the Growth Fund Committee to chair.
I, if you want my opinion, if we're going to have the at-large folks outnumber the City Council on that committee, I think, I don't know if I'm ready to support that yet until we see, until we see how it goes. I understand, yes, I understand what you're saying, but, so there is a motion to amend. Is there a second? During non-motion dialysis for failure of second, any other comments? It's a good idea, Ms. Mock. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion with the amendment signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign.
Aye.
So, will call, Mr. Weigl?
No.
Weber?
Aye.
Yes.
Dockler?
Yes.
Mock? Kavami?
No.
Veen?
Yeah.
I voted yes, four to three. Let's move on. Thank you. Two points. We're already on number three. City of Grand Forks Legislative Priorities. Can we receive and file, Mr. Feen?
No, we need to approve these. I would just take a few notes. Number one, generally, we approve these every two years. We're scheduled to approve these on November 16th. And then these provide us the way forward to this next session. I just want to point out two dates, Thursday, November 19th. Our local governments are, are scheduled to get together at Red River Auditorium. We'll see if that's in person or virtual. And that would be all of our, our local governments getting together with our legislators, letting in all our priorities. Second meeting would be Team Grand Forks, which would be December 8th. This is after the organization session, after the governor's budget comes out. We've generally gotten together across all of our institutional partners about what our priorities are. So that's the nuance of those two, of those two groups. Again, that might be virtual. We'll see if we can do it in person. On the list of priorities, I did speak with Senator Holmberg, who is very important to the city of Grand Forks and the state of North Dakota, because he is the Chair of Senate Appropriations. He said, um, some of our top priorities are infrastructure. He said, there is an appetite to do infrastructure this upcoming year, perhaps not other areas. But he said, infrastructure, there is, there is a world to do that. So along these ones, we have Perry Dog, and as you remember, we're probably going to, we were expecting to get about 14 and a half million. We're probably going to get two and a half million. That was oil revenues that filled up buckets. We're going to get the two and a half million. We're not going to get to the 12 million. There is discussion right now, it's, it's based more on the oil revenues and how they fill up the bucket, buckets. There are some discussions of doing it another way that maybe would help fill these buckets more. So I think we just want to support that. And however the state determines to fund that is great, but that would be a real game changer on that. But that's what I've heard on that. The revolving loan fund, that's become less of a, a really good issue is, that's with Bank in North Dakota. We spent, well, we were allocated 15 million. So if you look around all the new areas around town where we have opened up commercial industrial areas, we did most of that with Bank in North Dakota funding. It's 2% funding, up to 30 years, and that's really good. 2% for 30 years is good. It's become less good because we're probably going to, we're going to sell a bond here in the next week. And my guess is it's going to be less than 2%. It won't be for 30 years, it'll be 20 years, just so you know how the, the market's changed on that. I put in here, we put in, we had a discussion on Demers Avenue and 42nd Street, great separation. So in the spirit of Council President Sandy, he would say this, well, we need to get something done, okay? And the spirit of infrastructure is going to be a priority. We haven't gotten any of these areas done, and I've been here as city minister for going on eight years. Maybe we should just pick one that is far enough along and get one thing out of the way. And don't be shy about asking for one every session. So the strategy here is that we're, we're the furthest along the, on the great separation of 42nd and Demers. It has popularity with UND, with the Alara Center, and anyone who has to be there at that, at that terrain. So let's move that forward. Likely would be an underpass. We got a golf course there that's back to a golf course, so we got to avoid that. But that's why we said that's number one. Number two, priority would be the 47th Avenue interchange. And as you recall, that's to get the bird mouth at 32nd Avenue South, but also to provide some development opportunities. So that would be number two. But we're just going to be in the midst, while this session is underway, we're going to be in the midst of a EIS. We're not going to, nobody's going to want to stand up there and say, we're, we're not shovel-ready. So in order to not put anybody in a, in a challenging situation at the podium to say, we're not ready for the project, we don't even know what the alternative is, we don't even know if we can move forward with it, and then ask for a bunch of money. Certainly, we're going to ask for money to keep that going from the DOT, and, and they've agreed to help fund that 50/50, up to the 3 million. So while we're moving forward with the interchange, or the, the great separation, sorry, we're moving forward with 47th Avenue South on the planning side. So at the next session, the 23 to 25, we're ready to go with interchange. And to me, when we looked at this administratively, the bridges are a little further down, but they're still on our list. So that, that's why we ranked those. I want to point out one more thing, and number five, this is a, the city of Bismarck's really led on the street utility. And Council President Sandy, you and I have had this discussion, we should do that. The reason why we, under our previous administration and our previous city attorney, we, we didn't move this is because it's not in state statute that you can have a street utility. Water, wastewater, those kinds of things, those are in state statute that we can do that. We were concerned that if we went ahead and we got challenged, we didn't have a state statute that allowed it. City of Bismarck's has done a lot of work on special assessments, trying to reduce them. This City Council should be very proud that we passed that half-cent sales tax. That's moved our special assessments from 50% to 80% on maintenance. That's huge. And that's what Bismarck's trying to do with the street utility. I think this is another tool, and what we want to make sure is it's a nice tool, but don't do away with special assessments. This will help decrease our need to special assess, especially on maintenance-type projects, but don't do away with special assessments. So I think we can support this. They're looking for support, not only from Grand Forks, but the League of Cities. I think that, that will be another great tool in our toolbox on that. So with that, the rest are, you know, to the state. We've been very judicious on our Home Rule charter. We've been very judicious on economic development projects, on, on awarding them, moving them forward. So we don't have any bad examples. And we want to just continue to make sure the state continues to allow us to do all the great things we're doing here locally. And the rest are things that we've briefed that we should kind of continue on. But really, on this session, let's try to get something big done with the transportation project among all the other priorities. That's, that was our sense.
Thank you, Mr. Feen. The road utility is great because it'll fill a need at some point in the future because there simply isn't enough funding for our roads. Mr. Veen?
Yeah, I, I like the list that we've got. I mean, we've got three critical projects that we've been talking about for a long time. Ideally, we want them all. I think that's, that's very critical. My concern, and I didn't think about this till I was just looking at it, you've got, where is the money going to come for any one of these if we, if it moves forward? What's the match? Where, is it federal money, state monies? Where is the money going to come to be able to finance these projects?
Council President Sandy and Councilmember Veen, that's always a very good question. We see in one of the bullets, we need a reasonable cost share for a regional project. We'll, we'll do the great separation. Like all projects, the higher the percentage we're willing to pay, the more, more prioritized you get. And so I think at, probably at the max, we'd, we'd ask for, or at the minimum, we'd ask for 50/50 cost share. We'd, I think we'd want to ask for something greater than that. It's a large project. We may have to look, just like the state is going to consider bonding this time on transportation projects and infrastructure projects. I think we would have to look at some of these projects to maybe look at a bonding option with some of our long-term funding that we have, whether it's our one-cent sales tax or some other methodology that we could maybe carry those projects out a little further. These are 50-year projects, so we may not have the cash. We may have to look to look debt servicing our cost share of the projects.
So if I could continue, 50/50 cost share, is that state-local are you talking about? Is there federal money in these projects? Where, where does this come from?
I would say with us, with the state, I'm sure their money is so, we just say, we say what our cost share will be. When we go to the North Dakota DOT, we're not sure whether their money is state or federal or laundry of those two things. We just have to arrive at our cost share.
Well, because, although that's great, but somebody has to come up with the other half of that cost share or other proportion of that cost share. Otherwise, and we've always been strategic, when we ask for a project, we have to make sure that we have funding that's either federal or state available. So I just bring that up because if you're going to ask for 50% of a 45 million versus 50% of 25 million, your likelihood for funding will be on the lower-priced project versus the higher-priced project. And so that may, if the project is too expensive, it may mean we don't get any funding because nobody can afford to come up with the other half match. So I just think when you, when we look at it, I know where this one is the most shovel-ready. It's a needed project. We're not, not questioning that. The question is, is it fundable?
Mr. Feen?
Council President Sandy, I think the answer is yes. We got to, we have to fund all of these projects eventually. I would hate to wait, waste another session where we're waiting for something we don't even know. That 25 million is just kind of a swag at this point. We don't know what the option is, and there's lots of work to go on there. So I think we need to move all forward with these first two projects. Let's, let's take a run at this first one while we work on the other one moving forward. So.
Yeah, Ms. Mock?
What do we have to do to find out what the actual cost is for Demers Great Separation? Because I would think before session hits, we better know what that number is so we know what we're asking for.
Yep. The great separation, right? We've done further studies. We're seeing it's 45 million. That's the updated number.
And we're, that's what we're going to do.
That's the updated number, yeah.
I agree with that approach. I will say that I recall voting to support the 47th Avenue Interchange EA being done for planning purposes. Right now, I would have very strong concerns with having that be Priority A after that project because, partially because of the warrant for that is traffic on 32nd. And given all of the retail changes, closures, and recent shutdown, I would want to see updated traffic studies for that. And I'm not sure that that's a priority project that I would support.
Council President Sandy, I think, I think to Vice President Mock, that's why I'm more hesitant to, because we don't know all the details on that one. We'll know it once the EIS, once we spend $3 million on a stay, we'll know more of those options. And we just don't have, we're in the gray area, and so that's, but on the first one, we, we do have more of a concept of how we can get across the finish line.
Great. So you need a motion and a second to prove, prove the priorities to go to the Legislative Committee. Yeah, there was a motion and a second, yeah.
A second.
Okay.
Well, there is one already.
No, you just motioned.
No, no problem.
You second. Any other comments? And none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All the same sign. Which carries unanimously. Mr. Feen, a very brief update on the facilities and operations?
Sounds good. We'll dispense with the PowerPoint presentation because we include it in, in the staff report, Council President Sandy. But really, this is a, a really great example of, speaking of COVID-19, okay? This is, this is more infrastructure, so it's easier. But this is a comprehensive and integrator approach to work on the bird issue that we have. And our forefathers back in the late 1950s and 1960s kind of created a Bermuda Triangle of uses out there. The city of Grand Forks over the last 20 years, we've invested a lot of money to make things better significantly. You should, we should all be very proud. It's been the city of Grand Forks that has moved the needle in approving all those various uses through all the things that we've invested in. We've, we've invested tens of millions out there. In this case, where we, the plan was, and thank you to Lee Ray and to Melanie and all their leadership to make this happen, is, and we've really moved the needle. And if you look at those, with those goal numbers, the strikes versus where they are today, it's an incredible story of, you know, being in that 15, 16, now we're down to one as we move forward. We also looked at where are the big issues are, and we've always knew this, even when we were citing the landfill. The landfill is probably 5% or less of the issue. The lagoons were the, were the big issue in, in the surrounding area. And so looking at this in a comprehensive way and really trying to mitigate the issue in a real sincere and strategic way. And so that's why we looked at the whole area. They even included some of the, the various land uses. And so the strategy that's outlined that the USDA has concurred with is a multifaceted approach. It's more of an approach based upon having professionals and, and kind of working with all the different entities to, to make things happen, as opposed to kind of a one-shot thing with what you did with bailing and bagging and creating an easier approach in the landfill side, but a better approach, an approach that we can do day-to-day no matter what. And then incorporating the lagoons and the various land uses into a more comprehensive role. So really, what this plan will do is it will comprehensively look across, it would have us work with the USDA and contract with them on an ongoing basis. And so it would be more based on an operational plan that we can sustain with professionals that are going to help support that plan. And, and that's what's really gotten us to where we are, from 15 strikes, three, four years ago, to one strike in a consistent way and to a letter from the USDA. So what we'd like to do is, we need to go back to our regulators, the, our North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality and the FAA to say, here's a more comprehensive regional approach that we'd like to try and to modify our landfill permit, to look at modifying our, some of our wastewater things that we're doing there, and to kind of really partner with USDA and the airport and all the different entities. And really, Melanie, number one, and Lee Ray, number two, they're, they were the ones that brought all the partners together, made this happen, and not only made a plan happen, made a successful outcome happen. And we just want to carry that forward, Council President Sandy.
Thank you, Mr. Feen. It looks like you've been doing significant mitigation out at the, out at the bailing facility and the solid waste disposal site. I'm curious, changing from bailing to compacting, what does that mean for the lifespan of our solid waste facility?
Yep. Very good question, Council President Sandy. The, the site that we have was, as I recall, probably about a 90 years, 80 to 90-year site. And that was when we started this in 2008, at that point in time. I think it's going to be very similar. The bagging, or bailing, the bagging, maybe in cubes, but with this new compactor that we just bought, the Bullmake compactor, is going to really be able to densify the solid waste in that area. The other thing we were doing at our, at our landfill is that we can't bail all the, all the solid waste that comes our way. It's special waste, it's egg waste that will not be, cannot be compacted into a bag. It would ooze all over the place. So this will allow us just to landfill everything. The other thing we were doing is we're going to have to use more daily cover. That's probably one thing where we, we were daily covering on a weekly basis. Now we're going to daily cover on a daily basis. So there will be some airspace taken up by the use of more, more soil and dirt in that area, but I think it's going to be relatively the same. And we always thought 80 to 90 years from now, there's probably going to be a different technology at some point. This, the landfill is probably have a lot of diminishing returns where we'll, hopefully by 50 years, 60 years from now, we'll have a whole new paradigm out there. In the meantime, we've got plenty of, plenty of runway in front of us.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm sorry. What, what are we doing to, to deal with the, the waste that's blowing around now in the countryside?
Yes. That, Council President Sandy, Council President Sandy was quite exacerbated with me about all this blowing debris. And the one thing I know about landfills, because I've been at this a long time, sometimes exaggeration is the word. And so if you go in out there today and if you looked at those photos, certainly, we have blown around, we have blown around litter when we had a bale field because we still had loose fill. But these photos are to represent in and around the landfill, within the landfill, it's being well-managed. Is it perfect? No, but it's a landfill. So we've done a, a lot of work. We need, always need to be better and not lose track of anything, but we've, we've taken a special interest, not only for birds, but also for, for litter because we want to be a good neighbor. And we have been a really terrific neighbor out there since we started in 2008.
Any, anything else for the good of the order? Thanks, Mr. Feen. Moving along, item 2.5. Anyone has any follow-up comments or questions for Mr. Feen, you're welcome to email him tomorrow. Item 2.5, City of Grand Forks elected officials' benefits inclusion. Mr. Feen?
Council President Sandy and community of the whole members. This is an item that I'll say for myself, we pondered for a while, and under the previous administration, we wanted to catch a moment where we were in between elections to look at integrating our elected officials into further benefits of what we've done for, with city employees. And so now that we're, we're in this two-year, in between the two-year election point, looking at future and people running for office and making sure that, you know, we're continuing to be able to attract people to these really important elected officials. For example, I've talked- For example, I've talked to our Judge Boucher, our municipal Judge Boucher. That is a part-time position. And so if you look at some of the benchmarks that we use, like in Fargo and Bismarck, they have full-time municipal judges. We have, we have less than a full-time judge, so that's why you see the salaries are different there. But in my discussion with him, he says to me, we have got to be very careful that we remain competitive so that municipal judges that we get that will run for office, it's a competitive enough position where we'll get really strong candidates to that as Mr. Boucher is looking to probably move out to retirement, and he's up in a couple of years. And so we looked at some, we've been surveying you guys as city council members and as mayor and as municipal judge. And so that's what the survey is, and we try to incorporate you more and more into like the city personnel. So we're trying to get you to the market. All of us next year are going to get the $1,000 raise. And so this just show if it was market, how it would go up, just so you know that. So these are just for academic reasons. Everyone's going to get a $1,000 raise unless you were a part of some reorganization, that sort of thing. So what we're asking for this evening is, and you've seen what Fargo probably has the most robust benefits, they provide health and they provide retirement. What I'm proposing here for, and I'm really looking not only for you, but for future elected leaders that we get, is that we would incorporate them either into our own healthcare system that we have or at an equivalent, and similar to what city employees. Some city employees say they have a spouse that works at UMD, and they have better benefits than we have. If you don't elect something, we don't provide it, similar to a city employee. But it would allow, I think, others to look at running for office, would provide a further benefit. And I think finally, we want a culture, and especially in the midst of a pandemic, where people that work for the city of Grand Forks, elected or otherwise, have appropriate benefits, and we sustain a quality sense of being here with the city of Grand Forks. Generally, we provide benefits for employees that are over 50%. And I think with elected officials, all of you are over a 50% employee, so that was another guiding light, so. And if I was going to propose this, I'd propose it now in '21 in advance of an election in '22.
Thank you, Mr. Fieland. Comments or questions?
Why wouldn't this just come forward at the annual budget time? Why now instead of then?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Weber. I think one thing, we were in the midst of a pandemic, a changeover in city administration. We didn't move forward with the salary and benefit plan just because we deferred to the $1,000 raise. And so even though we presented some things, we didn't bring that plan forward because we didn't implement it. And so because of all that, I'm bringing this in as a single issue, is that we presented some information, and then we came back to say, but we're not going to implement it. We didn't ask you to approve that.
I'm especially sympathetic to the idea of future individuals. We want to make the opportunity to serve in city government as available to everyone as possible. I got to, this feels like a bit of a pay grab at a time when people are hurting because this, we'd be basically voting for a pretty nice increase for ourselves at this moment. When would it be effective?
I would have this be effective beginning of fiscal year, so when we enroll people. Again, I don't think it's a fiscal grab. I think it's only a benefit to provide benefits to elected officials if they need it. And so it's not going to raise anybody's. If you already have health insurance or something equivalent, you're not going to incorporate it. But if you don't have this, this would provide an opportunity for those elected officials and for those officials looking to '22 and understanding of what we have in place.
Mr. Fieland, perhaps I misunderstood the staff report, but the last sentence of the second paragraph, it states, "The proposal to offer city health insurance coverage and benefits or an equivalent meets the city goal of remaining competitive." I mean, I read that as, you get the health insurance or you get the cash. Is that not what the intention of this is?
City Council President, that is not, that is not the intent. We have a health insurance program, and so we're reviewing that, but you may have an equivalent, something that you just, I don't want that, but I'll have this. It would still be no more than what the city plan would allow for. I'm just allowing for people that have situations that it's not beneficial for them to be part of the city plan per se.
Has the municipal judge always been part-time? I thought the municipal judge was full-time, and we just had a really cheap judge.
No, he's, in my recollection, he's always been part-time, and I can't imagine a day when he went from full-time to part-time. We have substantially increased the salary of that position. So it's probably been increased over the last, I don't know, when I've been here, over the last, you know, several years, it's probably increased by about 20,000. As we've, each successive year, we've kind of boosted it a little bit. We've kept it under the others because the other ones are full-time municipal judges that are all the time. Generally, our judge is probably there, from what Al tells me, or Judge Boucher tells me, at least half the day, five days a week, and then sometimes they have afternoon sessions too. So we're not quite at 100%. Hopefully, there might be a sign, one day soon, I think we'll probably need a full-time judge, and maybe that's a future conversation. But right now, we're still considering it. We're not saying it's half-time, but it's something between 150, probably.
Ms. Ma?
Considering we are all elected and probably have health insurance figured out right now, would there be, I guess, a significant problem in waiting until the next budget time so that we know where health markets are and could explore that at the same time as we're exploring, you know, salaries and benefits and all of that all at the same time?
Council President Sandy and Council Vice President Maak, that's certainly up to you. You guys make that choice. I'm making a recommendation for you to make things better for all elected officials, and certainly that's up to you. It's just, it's a recommendation to move forward. I think we should be very proud of our city employees because we are projecting a 7% increase, it's a 2.3% increase, and that's based upon the less usage of our plan. So that's a significant savings, and thank you to all the city employees.
Mr. Weigel, comments?
I'll move approval. I think it's something that, it's an option if people want it. They don't have to take it. I for sure won't be taking it as an employee of UMD and my medical plan that I have, but I think that other people might be interested someday. And it is an option that they can take. They're still going to be paying in. It's not like it's 100% free, but I think it's an option that they can take. So I'll move approval.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Mr. Fieland, I sometimes question the breadth of comparisons that you use when we start talking about the council. I would make a suggestion. I like what Ms. Maak had suggested, waiting to the next budget cycle. And I think that, I appreciate you trying to take us off the hook. I very much do that. I think, who knows, the next budget cycle may be my last, and I might not care what I say in those meetings. I would make the suggestion, though, that when we are being compared as city officials, we should use the same cities that we use when doing the salary surveys for all the city employees. I know that that's a lot of work, and I understand that, and I apologize to Ms. Bovet for making that suggestion. But it's a lot easier for us to say, hey, this is what everyone is doing. Those are the people that we're comparing all of our city employees to. They're the ones you're compared to. It would just make it a lot easier for us to say, yes, it's $82,000 for the council president OK, right? I mean, just, it is what it is. So I think that, I would recommend that we bring this back for the next budget cycle and we utilize those other cities for comparison.
Sounds good. City Council President, we will do that. In the past, so just so people that haven't been here, I think the city council, you guys, time probably previous, felt comfortable with the North Dakota comparisons. And just so you all know, city employees are compared to comparison cities in North Dakota, South Dakota, Minnesota. So we'll incorporate you as part of that three-state comparable city survey. So we started doing that survey here in January, so we'll incorporate you in like kind.
Great.
Along with benefits, we'll also survey the benefits, what kind of benefits.
Yes, exactly. Survey it all, exactly. Very good. We'll move on to item 2.6. Well, I think we, we have them to vote on, right? Item 2.6, allocation of CDBG CD round three funds. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. As you may recall, back in September, we announced that HEB has allocated the third and final round of its CARES Act funding, and Grand Forks was set to receive about $298,000. The discussion at council revolved around the context of using that money as a supplement to the CARES Act funding through the state that Mr. Fieland was discussing earlier. As he mentioned, that funding is coming through higher than we expected. So now the thinking is maybe this CDBG funding should be allocated through our normal competitive process for local nonprofits rather than, I'm setting it aside for the Health Department or our partners at the school district, for instance. So that's the request tonight. If you agree with that approach, then we would roll this into our 2021 CDBG and community services grant allocation process that you just saw in the last cycle. We've juggled the schedule, which is attached to your staff report, so we still conclude at the same time, but it does give us a longer front end for applications and kind of condenses the review process at the end.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Richards? Move approval? Mr. Kavani moves approval. Is there a second by Weber? Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Richards. I really do appreciate all your work on the CDBG funding. We know it's been a lot, so thank you very much for that. Item 2.7, budget amendment, police department fiscal year 19, state homeland security grant program. Anyone have a problem with us accepting the grant funding? Moved by Weber, second by Maak. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Did you have something you wanted to say?
No, that's good.
Okay, very good. Item 2.8, award bids, police interceptor utility, heat package vehicles. Anyone going to go against the recommendation of city staff? Mr. Weber moves approval, second by Veen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate what you do for our community. Item 2.9, documented CADDx for Project 848, North Third Street reconstruction from Demers Avenue to University. Mr. Krinko?
Good evening, Council President Sandy, members of the committee. What you have before you is the documented CADDx, which is one of the first steps on a federal aid project. As part of this, this document includes the owner's approval and concept presented in the document, identify the orders before an alternative. Therefore, after the North Dakota Department of Transportation, a highway, federal highway administration will select the project alternative that is to be pursued. As part of this, we also have an updated cost estimate for it, which is a total project cost of about 5.3 million, which this is a little bit higher than what we originally anticipated when we proposed the project. And so as part of that, part of the recommendation is also to request the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks MPO amend their tip as part of that. And with that, staff is recommending approving the documented CADDx and concurring with the project concepts as proposed and selecting alternative B, which is the reconstruction, and requesting the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks MPO amend the tip.
It's great. It's going to be a great project. Mr. Veen moves approval, second by Maak. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries. That'll be a great addition for our downtown. Item 210, federal funding requests, 2021 through 2026 for regional roads, urban roads, urban grant program, highway safety improvement program, rail, highway crossing, safety enhancements, and transportation alternatives. Does anyone have any concerns about the staff recommendations?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigel, second by Weber. Any other comments, hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Krinko, that's a perfect example of the good work you've done the last several meetings, providing very good explanations for us. Thank you, sir. Last but not least, item 211, award bids, number 2021-31, water distribution tractor backhoe. Anybody have a problem with the backhoe request from city staff?
Move approval.
Moved by Veen. Is there a second? Second by Weigel. Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
By Maak, second by Kavani.